Yeah, before the board approves the consent, if you've, and I know you probably have taken a look at the personnel recommendation. I just want to point out one of the recommendations to approve resignation is none other than in the back of the room, Katie Delmas. Katie has been with me since I've started, so eleven and a half years. It's a huge loss to this district. The only good thing is Katie and Leon and their three kids are staying, living in Lewisburg. Katie's gonna go work up at Johnson County, at the county. So I know when you say Johnson County, a lot of people work up at Johnson County, but she's gonna go work for Johnson County, making sure Sarai gets his paycheck up there. But she's been my right-hand finance person since day one. We inherited not a good fiscal situation. And where we're at today, I wouldn't be, we wouldn't be where we were at without Katie. So I hate to have you guys even accept that resignation. I tried to talk her off. But you know, if it's what she feels is best for her and her family and her career, especially in today's world, getting someone for eleven and a half years, you guys, if you've been in management, know that it's hard to keep good people. And so I wish her the best. Her official last, she'll start up there the Monday after Thanksgiving. So we'll actively start seeking someone. And she's committed to trying to help bridge that gap. But I also know, a mother of three and a new job, you know, that'll be difficult as well. So Katie, thank you for everything. You've been awesome.
So the consent agenda, do you have a motion to approve that?
I'm going to approve the number 10, 2025 Board of Education Consent Agenda.
I said which?
I moved in second agenda. Approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Apple?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studenville?
Yes.
Tinsel?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Is there any 3.0 patient patron input? Jeff? It's just.
Yeah, it's at the top.
The Lewisburg School District welcomes its school districts patrons to every school board meeting. If the district patron wishes to address the board during a public comment, the board asks the comments are limited to three minutes per person. Except to clarify questions, board members will not interact with the speaker. But public forum is not an appropriate time or place to make positive or negative comments. Of a personal nature about the district, personal nature about the district or any district employees or individual students persons making comments that violate the privacy rights of individual employees or students will be asked to terminate, terminate their remarks. Jeff, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Worthington. I've lived in the USP 416 School District nearly my entire life. I absolutely love this district and the entire community. I graduated in 2001, played baseball here for four years, helped as an assistant coach for four years. And recently, I was an active member on the Vote Yes Committee for the new baseball field project. And all I'll say is these last few weeks have been crazy, exhausting, a roller coaster of emotions. And seeing a successful vote in our team's favor was truly a core memory for me. And still, yeah, it was just, it was just a lot to soak in in a week's time. So I'm just here to say thank you to many people. Thank you just to everyone for not giving up on the baseball program. I don't think that was ever something that was on the table, but they've kind of, you know, haven't had a lot of wins besides on the field, things outside of the baseball, baseball field. Thank you for seeing that there was a need for this program to have safer fields, fields that are on campus, and fields that can host JV and varsity competition at the same location on the same night. I've been a long supporter of the baseball program. There's been many times where we kind of felt left behind or maybe not supported by certain organizations or community members. But our programs won a lot of games over the last several years. And but we needed a win that was not on the baseball field, and we got that community win this past week. So we got a win thanks to our superintendent and our school board. So thank you for that. We got a win thanks to our Vote Yes team. It was comprised of parents, players, middle school students, elementary students, handed out flyers, went door to door, participated in community events, and just reached out to as many people as possible. And last, we got that win because of 1,249 community members that took time to cast their votes this past Tuesday. And if any of you are here or watching online, just thank you. And this just means a lot to so many people, and it's been needed for a long time. I think I speak for a lot of people in this community when I say I'm excited for the spring. And I just cannot wait to see how these new ball fields will bring our community together once again. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, 4.0 discussion items, 4.1 for school year 2025 audit.
Yeah, we usually start with teaching and learning. We're gonna put that as 4.2. Sean has two engagements tonight here and then has to go over to Spring Hill. So he always asks if he can go first. So you should have a copy of the audit in front of you. This is a reminder, Sean Gordon and his team goes through our fiscal statements from last year. So this would have, it's fiscal year 25, but it's from July 1st of 2024 to the ending of June 30th of 2025. Works closely with Katie and Jenny and Kristen here, and then also looks at our building funds as well. And is here to go through the audit and answer any questions. This will then be published on our website for patrons to view as well. So Sean, take it away.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll start with pages one through three. This is called the Independent Audit Report section of the audit. Here we discuss the opinions that we issued, the district's financial statements, management and the board members' responsibilities for the district's financial statements, and then more of our responsibilities as auditors as well. The most important paragraph here is that third paragraph down, you'll see my title says heading called Unmodified Opinion on Regulatory Basic Accounting. This paragraph says that we've issued the district's highest and clearest auditor's opinion that we can issue. So that reflects very well on the financial and internal control management by district staff during the 7/124 through 6/3025 fiscal year. Further through the packet, page four is called the Summary Statement of Receipts, Expenditures, and Unencumbered Cash. Here you'll see in the left-hand column, all of the different funds of the district, followed by beginning cash, receipts, expenditures, and then any cash for each of those funds. And at the very bottom of that right-hand column, you'll see the district is reporting a little over $14 million on hand as of 6/302025. The next section forward is pages five through 11, and this is called the Notes to the Financial Statement. This section, we present quite a bit of information, including different county policies that the district follows. There's also information on deposits and investments of the district, information on the involvement in the capers retirement program, budgeted transfers that were made, long-term debt, and like I said, quite a bit of information discussed here. This section is mostly the same as what some of you have seen in the past few years. There were no major changes required by the state in this section. And then the final pages of your document, from pages 12 through 39, are just more detailed breakouts of those funds that we saw previously on page four. So it's broken up by fund, and we, like I said, we present more information on different types of proceeds and expenditures that take place in each fund. And then if it's a, excuse me, let me go back a step. There's also a prior year actual column presented there. So you can see how the fund operated over two years, fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 25. And then also, if it was a budget column, there's a budget. If it was a budget fund, there's a budget column in there as well. So you can see how the fund operated against the budget they adopted for fiscal year 25. We had a great audit this year, as we always do. We did not have any auditor's recommendations to communicate to the board members. So again, that reflects very well on the financial and internal control management by district staff. I'd like to thank Katie and Brian and everybody else involved in the audit process. We appreciate them getting our questions answered. And then any information that we requested, they did a great job of getting us those items as well. With that, any questions for me on the audit report or the audit process as a whole?
I have a question. Based on the state did, was that last year or the year before? Were there some changes made that you saw this year versus?
So if the state had any findings, that didn't really apply to a financial statement audit. Those are kind of two different beasts. And so mostly what we saw here was the district continuing to follow the regulatory requirements, the statutes that they're requiring to follow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then, you know, so this is our fiscal audit, and then we have the accounting kits audit. We've just been notified by the state that they'll actually come in about April, towards March or April. So you know, we have the September 20th, and that's when we count our kids, look at CTE busing. And then the state eventually comes in and audits us on that. So it'll be, like I said, roughly March or April where we'll get our final student count audit as well. Have the two audits every year, the fiscal and then the kid audit.
4.2 Teaching and Learning Presentation?
Several on that. First, I don't know if it falls under this, but more to superintendent communication. We currently have no LRC applicants. And so we posted that. If you've seen the parent, the principal messages, they probably blasted that for six weeks, the front page of our website. So we thought we had an applicant, but that one, a patron decided not to complete it, according to Jenny. And so it'll stay open until we get some. So they, if we don't have any, because it is the school's responsibility to fill this one, then that board would function with four members, no different than this board could function with less than seven if they had to. So until we get some, so we now have posted the application instead of the October deadline, just, you know, it's open. So hopefully, some patrons would like to fill that one, and then we can have some interviews. Some of you usually sit on those and then recommend. But right now, we don't have anyone to even interview.
Not even the current person in the position isn't re-running?
No.
Okay.
And I think I saw on Facebook that they have another position open also.
Would that be the cities then to pick?
I feel like it was the LRCs.
I know.
No, but doesn't the LRC, does it?
Oh, it's that.
They appoint.
Yeah.
Our two are Mr. Wehe and Ms. Maggio.
Right.
And so, and then yes, you're right, then those four do one. So you think it's that.
Yeah, I think it might, I could be wrong, but I think that that's, I know that ours is open, and I think they have one too. Yeah.
And this one's currently for Mr. Wehe's, that's.
When's it?
In December. So, yeah.
Because he was just finishing.
The term.
Yeah.
Of. Yeah. So just wanted to let the board know about that. And communities that's watching, we welcome any applicants for that. You just have to live in the school district. So whether you live in the county city, as long as you're in our school district, that, and that'd be a four-year term that our board would select for that. Career technical grant, I was able to secure a Patterson family grant for career technical, so $150,000. So I'm currently working with all career technical teachers at the middle school and high school and asking them what they would like. So to expand our career technical. So that was exciting news to get that. We've been very fortunate to get quite a few of the Patterson family grants to help with our preschool out here. We also have one currently that we're drawing down to help with professional teacher development, teacher recruitment, teacher retention, helping them get advanced degrees or certifications. So always appreciate the Patterson family's support. They do a great job. The next would be, and I think I'd share this, or maybe you've heard, or it's definitely on our website. But last month, I know I shared about the high school being the kind of the top 5% of the high school with the World News and World Report, the US World News and Report. Broadmoor is ranked 19th out of 852 elementaries in Kansas on that report that just came out, and the middle school 22nd out of 564. Their methodology was all based off of state assessment scores. So that's why Rockville doing a great job, but they can't qualify for that because they don't give state assessments K2. So we know foundational learning is being built out here at Circle Grove and at Rockville. But kudos for those awards as well. So I just wanted to shout out for that as well. Which leads us right to Mr. Tappin's report on the state assessments. So state assessment results, he had shared how we did last month. Also know the board likes to see some comparative data. I'm handing this out. So Dave will go through once again the descriptors and then kind of has three spreadsheets to review with the board on assessment data.
All right. Good evening. The first page that I provided for you was just a reminder that on the state assessment, there are four different levels in which a student would score in, level one through four. And again, in 2025, the state has changed some of the terminology or definitions for each one of those levels. So as a reminder, level one is a limited ability to demonstrate knowledge at that grade level. Level two is that basic understanding or basic ability. And then in level three, they use the term proficient, and in level four, advanced. So those, again, those terms are different this year. I don't see those changing through this cycle of state assessments. And again, this is year one of data that I, that I am able to provide to you. The second page is the beginning of the data that I provided for you in the past. What I've done in the past, I've given you Frontier League data, and I've also have given you 4A data. So you have something to compare our scores to. We start on the top. We're looking at our 4A school districts. I have math on the left, English Language Arts are on the right-hand side. And what I've done is, in the far right column, is the average score or average percentage of students in each district that scored either a three or a four on both the reading and the math state assessment. So if you look right in the middle where it says total math level three and four, and then further to the right by the blue column, total ELA three and four, that's the average of those two numbers as you're looking at a whole lot of different numbers within that spreadsheet. The rankings in 4A, starting from Lewisburg, working our way all the way down for every other 4A school district. Once again, Lewisburg is on top of 4A with regards to our overall average. The key thing that I do like to always point out is, we identify our kids in four different areas. We had 8.55% of our kids in level one. Those are usually our tier-three kiddos that we're working through with a lot of different interventions to try to move those kids from a level one up to a level two. In English Language Arts, a little less than 12% of our kids scored in level one on that English test. But the data is very, very positive for the entire district. Kudos to the students who took the test. Kudos to the staff for focusing on curriculum, making sure that the written curriculum becomes the taught and learned curriculum. And then, of course, this administrators who help support us and help support their teachers through the interims, through the mini-test, all the way up to the actual day of testing, which usually takes place in most of the buildings, late March or early April. So the first set of data that you're looking at, again, 4A school districts. On the bottom, after that solid block, black line, how did we do against our Frontier League counterparts? Once again, on top of the list. So kudos again to Lewisburg. You can see how every other school district scored. I just figured it'd be better to give you hand copies so you can look at it specifically rather than looking at the big screens. And I think it's also to just share our data with you as a comparison, rather than putting everybody else's data out there as we are live streaming as we've gone.
Well, I do want to just point out to the people that aren't seeing what we're seeing here that, I mean, we're five points ahead of any other 4A school district collectively in the state. That's not to list out what all their scores are, but we are by far quite a bit, and 12 points higher than any other district in our league. So we like our baseball fields and stuff like that, but we're teaching the kids also.
And we're doing a great job, a great job across the board, English Language Arts, reading, math or math. I did not put the science data on here. As a reminder, the 11th grade junior science assessment across the state was, was not accepted by the state. When they looked at the different scores, there wasn't enough to segregation. So those scores were not reflected on here. And in the past, I've usually just provided you, when I do data for comparison reasons, just English Language Arts and math. The last page, Dr. Bearman and I had conversations, and as you know, the highest cost of living districts in the state, there's about 28, I believe. We looked at how did we score against districts that are qualified for that type of funding? And you can see where we scored, maybe not number one, but number two in our, in that area of the 28, plus the two Catholic dioceses. We put those on there as well for you to look at.
Second only to Blue Valley.
Second only to Blue Valley. Yep. And those are big school districts. Those are small school districts. If I was asked, if anyone knew the mascot to all of those districts and high schools, Dr. Bearman could do that for us. But he knows a lot more about this type of data as he looks at that every year.
Yeah, so this is the 28 districts that qualify for that. So we wanted just the third data point. And so these would have, the communities across Kansas that have the highest affluent patrons, like based off the average cost of their home. So to be on this list, your average home has, and we're on this list, has to be 125% more than the state average of homes. And so these, some of these districts were on those other two measures, but this starts pulling in districts that weren't bigger, like Shawnee Missions now on this list, comparable, obviously a little bit bigger, but like your Baser Lindwoods now in this district, Pipers on this district, Auburn Washburn over by, Topeka's on there. And then, you know, Catholic Diocese, we play a lot of those schools in this area. Wichita and the Kansas City one with Pittsburgh Colgan, we sometimes play them that. They would be in Wichita Catholic Diocese as well. You know, Meage Aquinas, St. James, and the Kansas City one as well. So yes, Blue Valley does, does have us a little bit on there, but with their resources, they're, I think the average home in Blue Valley is well over $700,000. And we also wanted to see where we stacked up on this data point as well, because this really represents the entire state. Goddard would be west of Wichita, and you name it. So I think it's just another good data point for us to take a look at it, at where we're at with other peer groups.
So kind of to finalize things up, I just want you to understand that we're celebrating, but we're also now getting focused on this year's assessments. So our students, our teachers are already working through interims. They just finished the first round of the interim, so we're starting to look at that data. We're also starting to do some mini-tests across the board in all of our grade levels. Are, we continue to do walk-two interventions, grades K through, K through five. And then next year, we're gonna add, our second graders can actually take a practice assessment through the state. We're gonna do that. Ms. Crater and I've already had conversations, and we'll get the second grade staff ready to do that. Just give us those kids as second graders, just kind of a look at what the test is gonna look like in the future. But it won't be part of any of our results. It's strictly for practice purposes. We haven't done that the last two years that it's been available, but I think we're ready to start doing that as well. So celebrate and then refocus. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Yeah, kudos. Very proud of that data. So that, we should all definitely be proud of it, as Dave said. Now, now the work's to be done. That's behind us. So continue to do great things this year.
Okay, 4.3, the 2026-2027 calendar discussion.
Okay. Matt, Sarai, Jennifer sat on the calendar committee for the district. We had a meeting last week at Rockville. The teachers that represent the schools on the calendar committee have been talking to their staff. But want to just kind of give you some summary of what we discussed. And then we have another meeting November 18th. And then based off anything we hear, feedback tonight, Sarai, Jennifer, and I will take back the committee, and they'll bring feedback from their school groups. And then hopefully, the December, I think it's December 8th, board meeting, we'll be able to bring it in front of you for approval. So there's three drafts that are out there, and they were in the board packet. Draft A is a carbon copy of this year's draft, as far as like when we start, when we end. But the calendar, you know, continues to build. And so like, for example, and I know maybe it's a little small there, but like if you look at May, so that's May of '27. This year in May of '26, we do get out on a Friday, which you see there in blue. But Memorial Day is the Monday after, coming up in '26. Well, you can see in '27, a reciprocating calendar, we now have a full week because Memorial Day is gonna be very late on May 31st. And so with that in mind, because our teachers, not that it's written in policy or anywhere, but kind of past practices, you know, let's, they always want to get out before Memorial Day, and we always have been able to accomplish that. So when they saw that extra week, then they thought, okay, does that give us the ability to start pushing the calendar back? And that's what draft B and C do. So a lot of the inner workings of the calendar are exactly the same. But draft B pushes the calendar back an entire week. So now that, and now the first day of school, that yellow day that says the 19th, that would be our sixth grade and ninth grade, and it's been now preschool. The previous calendar, and you don't need to go back, was starting on the 12th. And that first green day, which means when staff would have reported on reciprocating one was the 5th, now it's the 12th. And then draft C is just pushing it forward four days. So where you see the 12th there, now in this draft C, you're going to see, starting on the 11th. And then that would, you know, in May, so draft B would be pushing the teachers all the way to May 28th, the Friday before. And then this calendar, Jenny, Sean would push it, push until the 27th of May. So that's kind of the biggest thing in there. Several other talking points that I think we probably want the board's input is, there, there is kind of a little push. And actually, north of us, I think all the Johnson County schools do this, is they take the entire week of Thanksgiving off. That's been brought up at times. I'm not saying overall a big push, but in fact, I think what I'm already hearing is maybe the teachers don't want to do that. When that's brought up, so it's, you know, all right, let's go find November 23rd. Take 20, November 23rd and 24th off. Well, we have to go find those days somewhere. So then it's kind of a scavenger hunt on our idea, where do you go put those days, at the beginning of the year, end of the year? Because teachers are under contract for 187 days, and so you just can't. And, and then it kind of morphs into negotiations where, as I remind the teachers, right now it's just calendar committee. So if you want to negotiate your contract days, that would happen with the board, and you know, when we do that, March, April, May. And then if you were able to get less days, then we'd have to go back to the calendar as well. And they do understand that as well. So that is one. The other, and it's been brought up in here, and even is with state swimming. And so we know that we always, when we set a calendar, need to make sure when state swimming is and how that affects graduation. So, and you can leave this calendar up. So this is option three. But if you look at May, Jenny has up there, maybe you blow it up a little more, so it's I'm discussing that. So if you, option A, which isn't up there now, this is C, had the last day of school on Friday, May 21st, a reciprocating calendar this year. States, in that calendar, we would have graduation on May 15th. State swimming in May of '27, Kasia already has her calendars out there, is May 22nd. So if we adopt calendar A, there would be no conflict with graduation or state swimming. Calendar B and C get tricky on that, because we could not, if calendar B or C are adopted, we cannot keep graduation on May 15th. That's too many days. The seniors won't have enough days. So then we're, need to push graduation to the weekend of May 22nd. I know the board has discussed, if there was ever that conflict, then we're probably looking at moving graduation to a Sunday. So that would be, state swimming would be May 22nd, so we wouldn't touch that. And graduation would be Sunday, May 23rd. That is getting late for graduation, I think. We probably have one of the latest graduations out there. But there's just no way, I mean, that's, you can see that's nine days. If we tried to keep graduation on May 15th, that we would have any type of snow situation like we did last year with eight snow days. Our seniors would be very, very short on dates. So what else am I missing?
Yeah, so they told, when they talked about maybe pushing, pushing four days or pushing a week, we do start looking at an unbalanced school. We do start looking at an unbalanced school, uh, student days in first semester versus second semester. Which maybe at the elementary level doesn't play as big of a role as it does at the middle school and high school level with. Quarter classes or, um, you know, that really cuts into, um, their days. I mean, cause they're, the first, the first semester is already a little shorter than the second semester at thirty-nine. If we just adopt the reciprocating calendar at thirty-nine student days, the first semester and forty-two and a half the second. And so if we push it another five days, that really starts to throw off the balance there. That was some of the stuff that the, kind of the high school, um, more so was concerned about versus some of the other schools.
I think they're, I mean, it is starting early. So, uh, teachers, if on A, uh, new teachers will start August third. And then every, all the staff with our district convocation will be on Wednesday the fifth. Uh, but Ty's on the committee and he's already saying it looks like then the following year and even Kasia, they're, they're going to roll. And so we're just kind of one year out, we're kind of on that teetering where, you know, do you start early? Or do you get out early? Or do you start late and get out late? But if we just do a reciprocating calendar for one more year, um, then we should be okay. But, uh, I just, I, I would think that May twenty-second, twenty-third, that'd probably be about the latest graduation. Outside of the COVID year, we had to have it in July at Lewisburg High School. Yeah, and we have a big military, uh, uh, that depends. I mean, we always have some graduates, but you know, Uncle Sam wants those kids right away. And, and I don't want them to also be able to graduate. And not be able to have their graduation because they need to report as well, so. But we just wanted your feedback before we go back on the eighteenth. Uh, I guess what, any board's thoughts on taking the entire week of Thanksgiving off?
I, I'm personally not.
It isn't just all six, and I don't know about the privates in John Scott, I think they follow that too. But all six public Johnson County schools have done that. Some universities, uh, I know K-State and my kids have, but K-State takes that week off, KU does not. Uh, I don't know about your Pitt States and all those, but, uh.
It was challenging for the teachers to figure out where they were going to put those two dates when we talk about it.
They have an October break too.
Right.
Yeah, that's the big one, the parent teacher conferences. Another day that keeps being kind of flirted with is that April sixteenth day. Um, and you know, do they remove that day? But I remind them and obviously it's, if they want to, that's fine. Once again, we got to find the day for that, but if they do that, the teachers will have no breaks fourth quarter. Uh, and so when you mentioned that, they do kind of, it's still there, there, but the kids aren't there. It's professional development day, but it does kind of give them a little breather. Uh, if not, it's usually the hard way to snow days, fourth quarter, those are usually in.
I mean, doing either of those other calendars does, I mean, it adds another week to that fourth quarter. Without, like you said, no breaks. You said if we stuck with it one more year and then it would sink up. I know it's early going back, but.
I think that was kind of the collective feeling, I think, when we left the meeting. But they, the representatives from each school were going to go back and kind of poll their staff.
And on, if you can go back to calendar A real quick, because I know this has been a more direct. I mean, if calendar A, then we are, we don't have to worry about swimming because we go down to May. Graduation in this one would be on May fifteenth, a Saturday, which. Has been, I shouldn't say tradition because I'm, there's a lot of those grads around this table. You got to choose to graduate on Sunday, but it's been a while. Uh, so it has, Lewisburg graduation has been in the morning on a Saturday for a, a while. Uh, but if we would get.
Twenty years.
I mean, it's been set up in here, uh, but I know some of you said, I graduated on a Sunday afternoon. And, uh, but if we would go to calendar B or C, then we're going to have, we're hitting up with that Kasia swim of the twenty-second. Uh, so then you're probably needing to decide that graduation needs to be on May twenty-third. So it's on a Sunday and it's later. I don't know the district and the board years ago, I assume they moved it back Saturday for travel con. I mean, probably graduation, it was after having graduation parties, people having to travel back home.
That's what I think they did, yeah. That's what I remember. So, so with all three of these, uh, semester break would be over Christmas, right? Years, I mean, we don't run one semester in the past first of the year.
That's what Jen was getting at by pushing it a little bit. We're, we're already, uh, second semester is a little bit longer, gave it an A. And if we push another week, now first semester is going to be another week shorter. I think we're about three days different, now we'll be eight days different. Elementary doesn't, but you know, if you think at our middle school and high school where kids have semester classes, uh, then they're not weighted evenly. Uh, so, uh, that does become a little bit more of a challenge.
I was really thinking, even on like the sixth grade level, when they've got all those, the quarter electives that they're all doing, that really shortens some of those up, so.
I just wanted to make sure if there was any feedback, so we will meet next week and then I'll bring you, uh, one to have approved.
I think on the August, on the description down below on B and C, they don't, um, it's the same on all three of them. Not that that matters, but.
Oh, thank you.
I was a little confused on that at first.
Yep, thank you, Ron. Yeah, I did, I should have changed those. I know I did the May's, I forgot the August, so, yeah. So if, if, uh, B or C was selected, I'd make sure those were.
I mean, you highlighted, so I got the picture, but I'm like, when I was reading, I'm like, that don't make any sense.
Now, and it sure doesn't, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to take back to the calendar? No, next week. Okay, uh, five point O action items, um, remove action items from, from table.
Hey, uh, this is, is part, and all these action items pertain to the, uh, to last Tuesday's election results. Uh, yeah, if you recall, uh, there on May twenty-first, uh, the board chose to table. Previous action items, five point two, five point three and five point four from the May twelve board meeting. So there was a special board meeting on May twenty-first. And so this, before you can vote on these, this, and we have, uh, visited with our legal counsel on these motions. Uh, this would bring it back to the, off of the table. So is what, I know it's kind of an odd, uh, motion and, uh, maybe rare. But, uh, before you can do that, you need to, to do this motion. So, and then you will vote on the three that you did previously individually.
I move to take from the table, the motion made on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, which tabled action item five point two. Approve baseball softball project civil work. Action item five point three, approve synthetic turf for baseball softball fields. And action item five point four, approve bank financing terms for baseball softball project from the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five board meeting.
The moved and seconded to move, to take from the table, the motion made on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Which tabled action item five point two, approval of the baseball softball project civil work. Action item five point three, approve of the synthetic turf for baseball softball fields. And action item five point four, to approve bank financing terms for baseball softball project from the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. So any further discussion? Apple?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Um, Smith?
Yes.
Studabel?
Yes.
Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes. Okay, so five point two is approval of the baseball softball project civil work.
Can we have some clarification on? I, I don't quite understand. Last time we, or you know, I think when we talked about this before, you know, or talked about this item. That we would. Uh, our, the contracts for the work are going to be through first option. Or they have the contracts, we're not contracting with a general contractor or some of the others directly, are we?
So we will have, we will have three contracts and so we will have the lease purchase through first option. Uh, and so I was down there today and, uh, so I thought it would be appropriate to have the May, November tenth. Contract the same day if the board approves it. So we will have the lease purchase with first option. We will have a contract with Sands. Sands then will have a contract with every one of their subs. We will not have sub, and then we will have a contract with Legacy. So we will have three contracts with, after five point two, five point three and five point four.
So the Legacy does what?
Synthetic turf, yes.
Okay.
So Sands will put in the base for those and then, so once they'll work, and then once those bases are, are ready. Then Legacy will come in and put in the infield and outfield. Everything else will be under Sands. Uh, there were some alternates that the board, uh, we just, we didn't have the funds to do it that time. Especially under the four million dollar lease purchase. And so, and those were, um, the dugouts at the South Fields. The bleachers at the South Fields, the scoreboards at the South Field. Electrical work that will have to wire in those scoreboards on the South Fields. Um, and like benches in the dugouts, um, and then any audio visual down there. My plan is, um, and they work, we're going to carry and market the found, through the foundation of first option. Is to apply for a foundational grant for those items, uh, through there. See, I don't know if I'll be successful. I hope I can be, but I know Carrie's already emailed me and I'm working. So what I'm doing is going direct on those, so going right to ASCO and asking them what a government price is for the scoreboards. So there's no, if you guys don't have construction with those, you know, if we go through a construction company, might do a great job. But there's going to be an upcharge and so we'll go direct with the bleachers, heart and seating. Um, been working with Greg, uh, I go who's on getting me a pricing to run the electrical. And, uh, on the dugouts, on the JV builds, they will be, uh, very similar to what you see like out at Lewis Young. On the softball ones, the chain link ones, not the A field that Rodney Kazitz built, uh, out there. But the chain link with, uh, with some, with, uh, coverage on the top. Um, so we will work directly with them. But I also want those fully furnished and so I have budgeted in the capital outlay. In fact, we will have to write purchase orders out of capital outlay this year so that work can be done. If obviously if we are successful, I think the deadline of that grant is March first. If we're successful, then, uh, it would have been Katie, now it'll be whoever. We'll, uh, cancel those purchase orders and that will just give us additional funds to help pay off our debt for the fields quicker as well. One different change on the fields, the varsity fields on the north side. Is the scope of work asks for dugouts on that side to be shipping containers. Uh, so shipping containers are becoming very popular now, a lot of the fields up north have those. You wouldn't even probably know they're shipping containers, they, you know, paint them and, uh, they, they look really great. Well, whether it's what's going on in the world or whatever, but those are now actually really pricey. So there will be a deduct that will work with Sands on the, we can actually build CMU dugouts, uh, cheaper than getting those shipping containers. And so potentially on what, because remember there'll be four, there'll be two on the softball and two on the baseball. Depending on what that deduct is working with Sands, that could be free up some funds to do some of those things I just mentioned too. I just don't know, you know, how much that is yet. Um, so they, uh, also will be probably showing up, uh, towards the end of this week. Uh, you know, not doing much, I mean, they have to obviously put in all the erosion control and. But if you drive by the high school, you might start, there might be mobilizing their equipment. You know, another, uh, thing we've discussed is that big yellow, I'll just call it electrical boxes, Brian, whatever G would call it. But that has to be moved, it's currently sitting in where center field will be. So I've been talking with Chris from Evergy, they'll coordinate, Brandy Electric is the electrical sub that will be doing the work. And, uh, so they've been working with Brandy on getting that moved. We have to coordinate that because when they take that, move that box, it shuts power off at the high school. So I'm hoping it can be over Thanksgiving break, uh, so I just need to coordinate that with them. There also will be work on that s- south end of the staff parking lot. They actually have to take some of those stalls and so we'll have to coordinate that. So our bus, buses can still get through there, maintenance, trash trucks, you know, everything else. So working on that coordination, uh, as well, so. I don't know, Pat, have I answered your?
Yeah, that's, yeah, and we had talked about. You know, typical building or home project and that you get a building loan and then you start paying interest on the money that you. Use during the time of construction. And so are we gonna? Start paying interest on the full four million, are we gonna kind of ease into that?
Uh, Mark has shared the amortization schedule. So our first payment is not until they'll be, uh, so June first, uh, is the first payment. They're even payments, uh, I'm going to share it with you. So I, by looking at the, I don't believe so, I'm answering right, but based off, I don't think we owe first option a dime until it's pretty much completed.
Yeah, that, that's fine. When the contracts are signed and amortization schedule, can the board get copies of those?
Yep, absolutely.
You're talking like sort of construction loan for home, paying interest as you use the money.
Yeah, so if you build a five hundred thousand dollar home and it takes six months to build, you, you get a construction loan.
Yeah.
That will ramp up to that, then you go into a conventional mortgage.
Yeah, that was another, now. I do believe in listening to like Mark visit with these subs, they will be drawing money, obviously, as. And then Hollis and Miller on our behalf, they will be, so how that works is take, take Sands. Sands, so they won't have a lot, but whatever they work in November and equipment's expensive. It, so say it's a hundred thousand dollars worth of work in November. They will send that to Hollis and Miller and that's, that's already been in the contract. And the money we paid Hollis and Miller last year for this, they will review that work. We have what are called OAC meetings, so owner architect, construction meetings, we'll have those like twice, twice a month at least, maybe even weekly depending on. And we had that with our bond issue as well. Uh, so once Hollis and Miller agrees with that work, then they will, uh, communicate with first option that they're okay to pay them. So there will be those checks and balances, uh, on that as well. But yes, uh, once I get legacies and. Sands, uh, contracts and have them signed, I'll send those to you guys as well, as well as this one.
I move to approve the baseball softball civil work to Sands Construction.
Are you seconded?
It's the moved and seconded to approve the baseball softball civil work to Sands Construction. Any further discussion?
Apple?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studabel?
Yes.
Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Five point three, approved synthetic turf for baseball softball fields.
I move to approve the synthetic turf for the baseball and softball fields to Legacy Sports Construction.
Second.
The moved and seconded to approve the synthetic turf for the baseball and softball fields to Legacy Sports Construction. Any further discussion?
Apple?
Yes.
Bose?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
Studabel?
Yes.
Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, five point four, approve bank financing terms for baseball softball project.
I move to approve a ten-year lease purchase agreement with First Option Bank. To fund the baseball softball project approved in action items five point two and five point three. Promissory note and amortization schedule are included as part of disagreement. The lease purchase agreement shall comply with KSA ten dash one, 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 six CD. The district does not foresee spending more than ten thousand dollars annually from operating funds for maintenance, insurance. Or other charges exclusive of the capital and interest costs.
I second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the ten-year lease purchase agreement with First.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ten year lease purchase agreement with First Option Bank to fund the baseball softball project approved in action items five point two and five point three. The promissory note and amortization schedule are included as part of this agreement. The lease purchase agreement shall comply with KSA ten dash one 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 six C D. The district does not foresee spending more than ten thousand dollars annually from operating funds for maintenance, insurance, or other charges exclusive of the capital and interest cost. So any further discussion? Apple?
Yes.
Mose?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studeville?
Yes.
Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, six point O announcements. Six point one, regular board meeting, December eighth.
And just announcements, I maybe should have said, but obviously tomorrow, our two grade veterans programs. I know many of you will attend those longstanding traditions, ten AM. They're both at the high school. Ten AM is our secondary one, one A, one, not one A, one P M is our elementary one. And then of course, Thursday was our senior citizen lunch and another longstanding tradition that has been going on for a long time. And so that is at noon on Thursday. So.
At the high school too?
It is. I know Lanny's been attending and it's always a great event, so. Those are two great traditions that are always really great times. So just wanted to mention those two.
Okay. Seven point O. Jacobine?
I move to adjourn the November tenth, two thousand twenty five, regular Board of Education meeting at six fifty two PM.
A second.
The move to adjourn the November tenth, twenty twenty five, regular Board of Education meeting at six fifty two PM. Any further discussion? Apple?
Yes.
Mose?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studeville?
Yeah.
Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.